This is out in the hall, so you can continue it. This person's going to try to make a presentation here, so if you want to talk among yourselves, it's good, but if you just do it outside the room, thank you.
All right, I'm going to review a little bit about the process with this case. It's following as far as how the Public Service Commission reviews gas siting applications in New York State, so that you can understand what process the commission will be taking to review this project and also how you participate in it. First, I'm going to explain to you what section of law that it is reviewed under and the requirements thereof. Transmission siting is reviewed under Article 7 of Public Service Law. It was enacted by the legislature in 1970, and its intent was to create a single form process for reviewing applications and evaluating the need for an environmental impact of both electric and gas transmission facilities. The process requires the applicant to obtain what's called a certificate of environmental compatibility and public need by the Public Service Commission before they make or construct the facility, and it requires them to comply with certain requirements. So, the purpose of Article 7 is to, again, this is really provide a single forum for an open process to allow matters concerning the review in that same open process that would involve citizens and interest groups, municipalities, and state agencies. And while some of you may be familiar with the secret process, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act, Article 7 applications are not required to go through that process, and that's because there is a process that is involved with Article 7 that involves a detailed environmental analysis by the commission. It requires minimization of environmental impacts and also allows for full public participation. Now, we're going to discuss a little bit about the review that is conducted. So, the private requirements, the processing time, and also the findings that the commission must make are very depending on what type of length and diameter of a pipeline comes in, which is three different sections relevant to gas pipelines in New York. So, any pipeline project that extends 1,000 feet or more and is used to transport fuel gas at 125 pounds per square inch in New York State is required to go through this Article 7 process. There's a few exceptions: those that are entirely within the state of municipal right-of-way or street, located entirely in the surrounding city, or those that are replacing an existing facility and have less than a mile in length. As I mentioned just a moment ago, there are three different review processes for gas transmission lines depending on the length, diameter of the pipeline. There are those that are over 10 miles in length, and there are two separate sections for projects that are below 10 miles in length. Those that are under 10 miles and less, and those that are under 5 minutes greater than 6 inches in diameter, and those that are under 5 miles in length and 6 inches in diameter and less. This particular project, sorry, I'm going to describe why that is. In 1981, the legislature determined that for gas lines that are under 10 miles in length, they were going to add another section to the Public Service Law, Section 121(a), to decrease the processing time for these shorter pipelines. And so, the reason there's the three different sections is because of this new section of law. So, the filing requirements and the timeframe in which the commission can act are different depending on which section of the law it falls under. This particular case, 13T053, was filed, an application was filed by Williams Field Services Company, a DMP of New York. It's filed through Section 121(a)(3) of Public Service Law, and the proposal was to construct a transmission pipeline that's nine and a half miles in length, 16 inches in diameter, and maximum operating pressure is 1,440 pounds per square inch. Due to the description of that particular pipeline, it comes in with the following filing requirements: the applicant is required to provide the location of the line, a description of the facility, a need for the facility, a description of the ecosystem, land use, visual and cultural resources that may be affected by the line, the approved environmental management and construction, standards and practices that will be followed to minimize environmental impacts to the maximum extent practicable, and any other information that the applicant feels is relevant or the commission required. So, the application was submitted by laws required to be delivered to certain parties. Those include the Department of Environmental Conservation, Department of Agriculture and Markets, the municipality in which they're located, and any persons or entities the commission requires them to do in addition. So, once the application has been submitted, the process that will be followed by the commission, the process that is involved with that regularly. First, a case number will be assigned. In this case, it's 13T0538. Department of Public Service staff is assigned among those members. I have some colleagues who would be here tonight, and we're also available if anybody has some questions afterwards that we're going to mount to you. But staff is assigned, that the staff team is comprised of engineers, both gas safety and gas policy, environmental specialists, as well as legal counsel and consumer outreach specialists. With regards to timing, the application is required by law to be reviewed, and then any deficiencies to be reported to the company within 14 days. That was done in this case, there were certain deficiencies of the application. The company did supplement its application, and it's determined to be in compliance as of January 17th, 2014. In ordinary circumstances, the Public Service Law requires that the Public Service Commission make a determination on an application within 60 days of receiving a complete application. There is provision in the law that states that if the commission determines that a hearing is warranted, that they can extend that timeframe. In this particular case, the commission, by order of January 21st, required that the public statement hearing that was just held, and I will be held for just a little while, would be required, and so the timeframe in this case is extended. So, next, we're going to discuss how you can participate in this process. The application, first and foremost, is available in the public document. It's available on our website, which is www.dps.ny.gov. You can find all of the case materials, the application materials, and all the comments that have been filed in this case by searching the case number. With regards to participation, any person can participate, both parties and non-parties. You can do it in a few different ways. You can do so by submitting comments, you can do it electronically, by sending an email to the secretary of the Public Service Commission at secretary@dps.ny.gov, or sending something hard copy to the address that we'll put up again in another moment. And the other opportunity, of course, is to speak publicly here tonight at the public statement hearing. But again, you have other options as well, if you think of something else, you would like to send in written comments, you're more than welcome to do so. So, with regards to making a determination, the Public Service Commission is going to review all of the information in the record, which will include the application materials and the transfer for these public statement hearings, as well as the comments received in the case, and they're going to review all of that information and make a determination on the record. So, there are options, the commission's options are obviously to deny the application or to grant a certificate, and they might impose certain appropriate conditions. They may impose conditions to mitigate impacts, they could look at alternative locations or designs in their decision-making. They are however required to make certain findings, guidelines, and those include the basis of the need for the facility, the nature of the probable environmental impact, that the location of the line do not pose undue hazard to persons or property along the area to reverse pipeline, that the facility conforms with the applicable state and local laws, and that construction and operation of the facility is in the public interest. Once the commission does make its decision, there's a typical process that we can follow afterwards for compliance purposes. Typically, there might be right-of-way or access acquisition by the company, construction obviously would occur, clearing, grading of facility, environmental controls would be in place, erosion, track, dust, and follow-up measures. Post-constructions made through restoration and landscaping as required by the commission order, drainage repairs, right-of-way vegetation management plan. As you're probably aware, I mean, we were just a moment ago, we had a public statement beginning at 5:00, we didn't want to be beginning at 7:00, so you're again more than welcome to make a statement on the record if you'd like to appear tonight. And in addition, as I mentioned earlier, there's other opportunities for you if you would like to make comments on the record in this case, and you can do so, again, by sending an email to the secretary, to sending a hard copy to the secretary, which is also an option. If you go on the Department of Public Service website and look at the case file, there's an option there, you can click out on the link to submit comments as well. And the commission did ask, and it's noticed, that comments in this case be submitted by March 14th of 2014 to be considered. So, if you do want to follow up with a written comment, please do so by March 14th, give the commission to consider it. So, we have a table set up outside the door with some maps, if folks are interested. I have different members of staff with me here tonight. I'm from the office of General Counsel, I'm an attorney with the Department of Public Services, we have Ben Morino. We can also have another stake load from my office this year. We also have some engineers from our Office of Electric, Gas, and Water, and some environmental specialists from our Office of Energy Efficiency and the Environment. And if you have specific questions about the proposal or want to look at our maps, they're going to be outside in the hallway, so you're more than welcome to come and ask us any questions you have about the project, depending on the best of our ability, or if you have any questions on the process, we're happy to help you with that as well. So, we're going to be out in the hallway, and the next public statement hearing is going to begin in about 15 minutes, so we will be available until then. Thank you.
This is a public statement hearing in case 13T0538, application of Williams Field Services Company and DMP New York to construct a gas pipeline in the town of Windsor. My name is Raphael Epstein. I apologize if I'm totally repeating this for everybody that has already heard this at the last session. I see a lot of the same faces, but in any event, I'm an administrative law judge employed by the Public Service Commission and assigned to this case. As you may have heard me explain before, the purpose of this type of a hearing is to enable the commission to hear from you, find out what kind of concerns you have, what kind of issues you want to, you want the commission to think about. And as we have also been saying this evening, in addition to speaking here, or as an alternative to speaking here, if you don't care to get up in front of your friends and neighbors here, there are a number of different ways that you can address the commission in writing or by telephone, in writing an email or conventional mail. Those are all explained on the flyers on the front page. I also indicated in the previous session that it's up to you to decide what topic you want to talk about. Technically, the only topic in this case is whether this additional pipeline should be built, which is intended to connect the gas supplies coming from Pennsylvania to the Millennium Pipeline in New York. It's intended to increase the capacity that Williams now has to do that type of transportation by putting an extra pipeline in the same rate of way where they already have one. However, we heard a good amount of comments earlier this evening about gas and energy policies, more general things like that. So, once again, if you want to talk about those more general issues, you're free to do so. I can't guarantee you that the commission will find those other types of comments relevant in this case, but that's not for me to decide. It's up to you to decide what you think are the important issues to talk about tonight. And also, the basic thing you should understand about this hearing is that your comments will be transcribed, they will be put on the commission's website, where you can look at your comments, when the transcript is done and it gets closed, and you can look at your comments, you can look at your friends' and frenemies' and neighbors' comments, and you can look at anything else that's been filed in this case, or at some of other cases. In the previous session, I imposed time limits, and I tried to keep them strict, not that I was necessarily very good at that, but at this point, we have 10 people signed up to talk. Once again, as I said before, if you've not signed up to talk and you change your mind and after listening to some of this, you decide you would like to talk, please go ahead, go back there, get a card and sign up. If you have talked and you want to talk again, that's fine too. And since at this point, we only have 10, I'm not as concerned about making a time, ending at a certain time, because we are committed to being here until 8:00 at a minimum. We're also committed to be here until everybody who wants to speak has been heard. If that takes us past 8:00, we'll stay for as long as it takes. But I think that unless all these 10 people decide to talk for an hour, I think we could let everybody talk for as long as they want in this session. It turns out that suddenly we have more people, or everybody's taking much longer than they expected. I reserve the option of starting to impose a time limit, but right now, it just strikes me as not necessary. So, don't ramble or filibuster unnecessarily, but it looks like you have all the time you need. And, oh, another point I made in the previous session was that if you have a written statement and you want to read it, that's fine. If you have a written statement and you want to just summarize a few highlights of it, that's okay too, and of course, you're free to speak even if you have no written statement. So, are there any questions about those procedures? Okay, and I've been reminded by, I heard from people after the previous session that it's difficult to have somebody trying to speak and conversations going on elsewhere in the room, and I know all about it because I've reached an age where if there's a conversation going on back in the room, I can't hear anything else. So, please be quiet and respectful of when the speaker's having the microphone. Okay, and that's enough of that. The first speaker is David Marsh, please. Right, try to use the microphone in a way that you can be there. You have to find a convenient, because if you don't get close enough to it, it won't do anything for you, but if you get too close to it, you get the reverberate, so see how it's going.
Thank you again for this public hearing. This is going to be a repeat. I just want to read my letter again for anybody that wasn't here for the first session, and then submit this in writing. Dear Secretary of Justice, Williams Field Services Company LLC and DMP New York Incorporated LLC have filed for a certificate of environmental compatibility and public need. This letter is in support of the Williams-Windsor Pipeline Propose for a nine-and-a-half-mile, 16-inch-diameter natural gas pipeline to increase viability and supply to the Northeast. Natural gas pipelines are a safe, efficient transportation vehicle for the clean energy New York needs to prosper. And this new line will run parallel to the existing line, and the construction will take place in a 65-foot-wide corridor, 40 feet of which is permanent right-of-way for the current line. The construction jobs created will be filled by labors, heavy equipment operators, truck drivers, and welders mainly from New York State. The Williams-Windsor Pipeline Project will provide New York construction jobs that are urgently needed. It will also provide larger maintenance support positions to the facility after the facility. In addition to the construction and employment wages, Williams Field Services Company will inject much-needed revenue in the local accounting through the purchase of goods and services from the local suppliers and retailers, and through increased local tax base. The current infrastructure has shown that has reduced rates for the local town resident tax rate by 8 percent, decreased by 8 percent, and Windsor Central School District taxes have been reduced by 5.8 percent. This increase in the structure should continue to decrease that tax rate, which is affecting local people. I've heard some of their other concerns, but you bet as well. As a business manager of Labor's Local Assembly 5, representing almost 1,000 members, 1,000 construction labors and their families in the Southern Tier and Finger Lakes region in New York, I urge you to grant a certificate of environmental compatibility for public need to Williams Field Services Company LLC and DMP New York Incorporated LLC for construction of a natural gas pipeline system under consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. John Quinn.
John Quinn, I live about a mile and a half from the existing compressor structure. I'm up on Dunbar Road. I wonder if anybody here has seen the movie Point of View, and it's interesting that in that movie, people's perspective of what happens is based on where they stood and what they hear, what they see. On a good night in the middle of the summer, I'll open my window and I can hear the stock cars running at Nine Mile Point. And if the wind's a little different on that same night, I might hear the trains and whistles at Santa Carey Springs. But I'm blessed that I don't live within a couple of hundred yards or a quarter of a mile of the compressor station and have to listen to the unending noise every day, all the time. It would be nice if the Public Service Commission could grant approval of the new line with a fourfold penalty for non-compliance with existing noise compliance or any other rules or regulations at the start of the approval date, and that midway into the project, if it isn't remedied, it'd increase that penalty tenfold, so that compliance is more effective by complying as opposed to denying. A couple of other things that run along the same line, and I'm sorry that I'm remiss in not knowing what Williams Oil and the new companies have contracted with as far as payment in lieu of taxes. But every time that the fire truck responds and goes up my road to the compressor station, they should have to pay adequate fees for that response to justify pulling four fire companies, Harpersville, Gaffin, Windsor, West Windsor, Chango Forks, whoever responds, one fire, there was four or five companies up there. They should have to pay adequate amount to the storming service agencies for their inconvenience, so to speak, of going up there and not buy it by giving to the Windsor PTA or to the boosters club. The money ought to go straight away to the general fund to be adequately and properly dispensed amongst those agencies that responded, to include nicely given appropriate for Broom County Sheriff's Department, because they're all full off of something, to go to something that Williams allowed to happen through improper materials or poor maintenance or whatever happened, caused that to lighten its burden, who knows, it maybe happens. Another aspect that I think should be considered is that the highway roadway surface width should be looked at, and that's an environmental constraint that Williams is paying us something to our local catch burden that they're not adequately taking care of. On the side roads, the real side road where they go off and they're only, the tractor trailer doesn't go up there but twice to deliver a little bit of bag fill or a piece of pipe, that's one thing. But on Dunbar Road, it's a never-ending litany of massive 18-wheelers, some of them with state police escorts because they're oversized, low in base and length and width, traveling on a road that has not been properly or adequately maintained. They have two-way traffic for vehicles of that size. It's a rural road. And while Williams was kind enough to do something about resurcising it, Windsor was kind enough to put the snowplows down, put it all in the ditch, and the shoulders have not been adequately maintained or widened, and so as a result, we're back to square one with the potholes and ripples and the bumps. Lastly, I think that most of the heavy equipment people that deliver up that road are pretty decent about coming in here slow and monitoring how they're traveling, watching speed limits, road signs, local traffic, the dogs that get loose from neighbor's yards and run in the streets. Locky isn't quite as nice, some of their trucks are a little quicker. FedEx is indecent, they come screaming through there. Conway, a little bit rude. Williams trucks that are so marked have always, in my opinion, gone by at a reasonable rate, but a lot of the subcontractors seem to forget there's a 40 mile an hour speed limit on the lower end of Dunbar Road, and the road is not designed for faster speed with the bigger vehicles that are going up to the compressor station. Now, if you go over on Rockwell Road, I understand that there's access needed over there, and I'm just talking about two of the smaller roads. There's many of them on this nine-mile stretch that are impacted. Those roads probably need the same kind of attention, but they don't have the traffic, the daily traffic that goes back and forth to the compressor station. So, if the Public Service Commission could put Locky and Broom County Sheriff and the state police, put a cap on that road once in a while, maybe we could solve some of that traffic gap. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
I've lived in the area with my wife for 37 years, on land that's been in her family for three generations, and I'm located approximately a mile from the compressor station. for three generations, and located approximately a mile from the compressor station. I respectfully request that the PSC deny the Williams application to build another pipeline. The state of New York should not triple the capacity of this facility that within two years has the scene of two very unsettling accidents. The first, the frightening explosion in July 2012, was deafening from a mile away, and it was caused by the release of gas during an electrical storm. The second fire was last month inside of a facility that, and the fire crew has already stated, companies from all over the area. These two local incidents could be chalked up to bad luck, except for the fact that also within the last two years, there have been a matching pair of explosions and fires forty miles from Windsor at the other end of the Pennsylvania operation. There was a hole blown in the Williams Lake River Station roof in Susquehanna, and a fire at its Brooklyn station. This is beginning to look not like a local issue, but a systemic. In addition to the PA safety, the Pennsylvania safety lapses, let me offer a third New York State example, also less than two years ago. Williams was fined fifty thousand dollars in March 2012 by the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration for failure to follow its own internal policies to control corrosion in a pipeline in Staten Island in New York City. In addition to these regional incidents, over the past ten years, Williams has paid hundreds of millions of dollars in fines for manipulating the natural gas market, misleading its own shareholders, and contaminating the water and air around its plants. While the recent incidents in New York and nearby Pennsylvania have yet resulted, have not yet resulted in deaths, a massive Williams explosion last summer killed several people and injured more than one hundred in Louisiana. In the safety night program that we had here in town on January twenty-fourth, Williams' on-site manager tried to reassure the community that safety is the company's highest priority. When someone in the audience asked whether an expansion of the station would increase the probability of new accidents, the manager replied that the new compressors will be the same as the current ones. Employees therefore, if you reason, will be working with familiar machines, thus improving their job performance by doing repetitive work. But this answer is not reassuring to me, because it implies that the Dunbar Station workers need more training. If this is so, the facility should remain shut down until employees receive that training, especially since the accident investigation is not completed. At this point, we don't know if the January fire in 2013 was caused by operator error, improper maintenance, a product defect, or poor management. At the safety night, we will also assure that Williams is constantly striving to improve. Lessons learned at one facility are shared nationwide. If that's true, what does this say about the explosion of 2012, when a large amount of volatile gas was purged during an electrical storm? You would think one of the largest pipeline companies in the United States would have learned from system-wide experience that no compressor station should perform any kind of operation that could foreseeably require purging during an electrical storm. There should be a protocol in place, a sort of procedural checklist, to prevent such risks. If no such protocol was in place in 2012 prior to the explosion, our community should be very disturbed and concerned about whether Williams' corporate culture truly does value public safety. The PSC could shed some light on this, but the report on its investigation of the 2012 fire has not been made public. The town of Windsor could not get access to that report without filing a Freedom of Information law request. And the town supervisor has told me yesterday that the town is not allowed to make copies of the report available to the public. Anyone who wants to read the report must file a FOIL request individually. I respectfully ask that the PSC release the results of the first investigation, and that when it is finished, share what it has learned in the current investigation of the latest part. The PSC website contains a great deal of information about each permit application, but apparently it does not post reports of accident investigations. If there are some legal difficulty in releasing the results of an investigation, I hope the town of Windsor officials and concerned residents will talk to our state legislators. Aside from fires and explosions, there's a different safety issue that had not received attention. The Dunbar Station is allowed to emit thousands of tons of air pollutants every year. If the PSC permits a second pipeline, the station is expected to triple the volume of gas it processes and sharply increase its air emissions. Currently, the station is permitted to release twenty-four and a half tons of hazardous air pollutants, including benzene, methyl benzene, toline, and xylene. Ninety-five tons of nitrogen oxides, forty-nine tons of volatile organic chemicals, and ninety-nine thousand tons of carbon dioxide. Are we facing a tripling of that amount? Keep in mind that the compressor station is doubling, if this is approved, is tripling its volume within three years. Who's to say in two more years, or if the price of gas goes up or whatever, they won't double or triple it again? They've got forty acres to work with. Unlike the noise and safety issues, hazardous air substances are not confined to the neighborhoods surrounding the station. Over a longer term, air pollution can have serious and insidious public health consequences for the entire town. I'm talking long-term now. These substances are regulated because they cause cancer, birth defects, respiratory problems like asthma, neurological problems that lead to memory and mental decline and loss of motor control. Symptoms can include loss of vision, dizziness, headaches, spasms, chronic fatigue, and other problems that can be erroneously attributed to other causes. But many studies show that air pollution from the natural gas industry most definitely affects health. I will cite just the most recent federal study published last month. The study by the U.S. National Institute of Environmental Sciences found a strong association between the number and closeness of natural gas wells within a ten-mile radius of homes occupied by lovers, and the prevalence of congenital heart defects and possibly birth defects of the brain, spine, and spinal cord. This was a study that examined data from a hundred and twenty-four thousand people, a hundred and twenty-four thousand rural births in Colorado from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand nine. The study of the lake pollution that comes from flaring or associated drilling activities and other factors, such as fracking, waste tanks, chemical spills, diesel engines, compressor stations, dehydrators, and pipelines. Now, what's the connection to the Dunbar Station? The chemicals associated with the gas fields are the same chemicals that Williams is dumping by the ton in the air in town. Although I am rough and cynical about this process, because it seems regulatory agencies never had a pipeline they didn't like, I'm here today because I have not given up hope that PSC truly will put the public interest first.
My name is Kelly Danay. I live at four-twenty-one Dunbar Road, directly southeast of the compressor station. Since this facility has gone, and I have presented in the later part of 2011 videos of numerous flooding issues that have come since this building has been put in place. There were these two creeks that let the water run off in this portion of the valley, and essentially one of them had been cut off, and directly the remaining of the water, the remainder of the water over to the creek that directly runs through my property. I presented these videos to two different town boards, to Williams. I've had representatives of Williams and the town board at my property looking, and basically all that has been done, as we've talked about it, yep, we got an issue, we turn around and we walk away. And that's the end of it. In 2011, while construction was near-finished, the first base, I was flooded three times within a six-week period. This puts my furnace and my hot water heater underwater all three times. Nobody's there bailing out but me. Again, I have presented everything, and I have been involved in meetings with Williams and the town combined, and basically what I walked away from those meetings, hearings, was that we want to discuss how we can do the greater good for the town, so we can take care of the masses of the little guy gets forgotten, basically, the issues that are there. Nobody has, like I said, nobody has come back to do anything as far as mitigating the water. The issue still goes on. The air quality is unbelievable out there. I mean, every time you turn around, there's the emergency shutdown where this thing is venting. There's been five or six different emergency shutdowns, which have all been done manually. And to the best of my knowledge, the facility is only manned forty hours out of a hundred and sixty hours, sixty-eight hours a week. That leaves a great window for accidents when the place is not manned. There's been incidents where the compressor station has been sitting there intermittently venting. It will vent for five, ten seconds, shut down, and then start venting again. And when I pulled into my driveway one night, I started hearing this, and it went on for an hour before I called the emergency number, and the guy in Oklahoma or wherever he is that answered the phone had no idea that this was even going on. I spoke to somebody else in the neighborhood, and it took an hour from the point of my phone call before the lights of this facility came on. So there's a minimum of two hours that this facility is venting. Everybody in that valley is breathing this air, and they have no idea this is going on. And now they want to put in a second line and double the capacity, if not more. I am myself opposed to the added gas pipeline right now, at least until they can take care of the issues that they've got in front of them. We were told in 2010, when this was presented, we would not hear, smell, or see it. Every one of them, we've got in our face daily. So at this point, I am against the addition of the pipeline until they come into compliance with all of their issues. The noise ordinance, I live twelve-hundred feet from this thing, it's, you wouldn't believe it. I sit in my living room, and if I turn everything off, I've got a constant rumble, as if I got a furnace or something running downstairs. When this thing vents, the first time in 2012 with the lightning strike, I thought a tornado was coming down the road. I really did. It's unbelievable. Until they get in compliance with what they're doing, like I said, I'm opposed.
Thanks for your time.
It pains me to hear all this from the people who live near these facilities. I'm from Susquehanna County, and I see what Williams has done to our county with all the compressor stations, with the pipelines. And laser went through my part of the county. I'm a Silver Lake township in the northern part of the county, and I videotape everything that's happening in my county since 2008. So I have over five hundred videos right now showing the problems and the dangers to all of us. So I'm hearing what is actually happening also to all of us. We have compressor stations on sixty acres. We have compressor stations now that are going up to twelve compressors on one site. So you can imagine the noise, the emissions, the people are adoring close to these compressor stations, like the gentleman that was here before me, within twelve-hundred feet. Williams has had two accidents already in our county the past two years, at the Laker Station, which I was there, and at the Brooklyn Station. These are stations that are only about two years old or less. They have a leak of gas, then they have an explosion that rocks the neighborhood, then they have a fire, and then the fire burns for hours, and there's damage to the building, to the compressors. Then all kinds of fire departments, of course, are called. We had up to about six fire departments called. Then they have to try and turn off all the gas in the vicinity so that we can minimize the damage. And then they have to use a foam to put on fire. We had to wait for our truck, which was from another county, so we had to wait hours. Williams has a record now that's only in the past few years, let's say two years, they've had several accidents, leaks and explosions in New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Louisiana. People were killed and died in Louisiana. This company has had millions in fines. They also put in pipelines, pipelines near in our neighborhoods where people have lost their water. Even pipelines can damage water. Though they have all this going on, why are they still allowed to operate? Where in the United States do we have companies that have millions in fines, all kinds of accidents, and they're allowed to operate? What kind of protection do we have? What kind of commissions do we have? Why are they even being considered in this application? I'm asking the commission to please deny this application. You have a record here that can show you that this company is not to be trusted or relied on. When they do tests at the compressor stations near me to test for the noise... When they do tests at the compressor stations near me to test for the noise, they like to play little games like, oh, it's not at full capacity, so we'll test it. And we have a noise ordinance in our county at 50 decibels and also a township ordinance of 55 decibels. So they went out there and they tested with their own people. They hire the crew. They hire the crew. They pay for the crew. So of course, they come in within the allowable limits. And then when I looked at the test results, it said, well, it's not at full capacity. We're going to estimate. When it's at full capacity, it'll be within the 50 or 55 decibels. Then I asked the township people, how about you testing? Where's your company? Where's your test meter? Oh, we're going to rely on Williams. Would you like to rely on the fox when he's in the chicken coop? That's what they are. They do the testing and you rely on them? We have homes within 400 feet of compressor stations. You can imagine what that might be like. So if you want to hear that constant hum and then wait for the next leak, the next explosion, the next fire, maybe it'll be coming towards your house. You might be in the path of it. And like the gentleman said, they're not even fully manned. They're only manned a certain amount of hours per week, they're not fully there. Most of the time, it's empty. So I'm telling you right now, this is an industry that will say one thing, but will do another. They will reassure you that they're going to do these, this, this, and this, and then when the reality hits, it's not the same. I wouldn't give them an application at all and I ask you to again, please consider to deny it. The laser line in our community had eight blowouts in one creek. You know what a blowout is? The drilling mud comes through a crack, a fissure in the ground or in the creek bed and then explodes out and fills the creek. We had eight of those in one creek. The laser line was fined for five creeks that they blew out in our county. So this is something, when I asked the laser workers, you know, how often do these blowouts happen? So one of them said, oh, this happens. It happens, you know, often enough. We know how to handle it. Sure, they know how to handle it. Can our environment endure whatever's coming up in the drilling mud, which they also use gels besides the bentonite, and the bentonite has a little bit of minute that's coming up in the creeks? And changing the aquatic, like, we have special EV, exceptional value creeks, and I'm sure you do too. We have special trap-filled crap of creeks. I'm sure you also do. So they can go anywhere. They can go in any of the wetlands and they can also have blowouts there. And then what about the blowdowns? Like he was explaining, they blow out that gas. It could be every week. They blow down and you can hear, like he was mentioning, up to an hour. Sometimes a few minutes, sometimes it's 10 minutes, sometimes it's up to an hour. We hear this tremendous noise like a roar and the gases are being released. I heard a roar when I was in Montrose and I was sitting in my friend's kitchen. We were about, I would say, two miles, mile and a half away from the leak while they were blowing out a pipeline. He said, what is that noise? It was so loud, it roared through Montrose. Nothing, it's like nothing I've ever heard. So I went out and drove to find it and I found it in South Montrose. And they were blowing out a pipeline, no warning, nobody's told, we have to breathe raw gas as it comes out. And then the emissions, tons of emissions, thousands of tons of emissions on each of these compressor stations. And you know that they have to increase this compressor station's take in the extra gas. So if you have four compressors right now, it can double in size or more. That means more noise, double the emissions, double the sound, and double the danger. This is absolutely unacceptable that this could be in neighborhoods, near people's homes, near schools. We have three compressor stations going in within two miles of one of our school districts. We have people come out begging them not to approve a second compressor station by Williams. But of course, if they meet the requirements, they have to approve them. That's what I think I even heard this gentleman say, they meet the requirements, you know, they'll have to approve them. So this is the problem. Do you want, and then if they do this compressor station, they'll probably build another one too in the vicinity. We have them every two to four miles. We have three in two square miles. And do you want this? Do you want this near your homes? How are you going to sell your houses? Who's going to want to buy next to all this? Do you want to have your children raised in this? Do you want to have pregnant women next to this? This is absolutely horrendous and unacceptable, this is what they're doing to Americans. They can do it anywhere in these rural areas where there's no zoning. They're not allowed to be industrial zones only. And this is what's happening throughout my county. We have dozens of compressor stations right now and throughout the whole state, 40 counties. So we need to say no. Whoever, whatever you can do, protect yourselves because the government is not willing to protect us sufficiently. Our governments have failed, they're coddling the industry, the President of the United States is coddling the industry, the governor is doing the best he can. I mean, New York is doing better than Pennsylvania. I have to give you that. But our state, they're basically just letting them do what they want. Thank you.
Charles Wade.
I'm Charlie Wade. I'm from the county union, western end of the county here. Basically, from that, I don't have chicken in the pot as far as this local gas line goes. But I'm a forester and a natural resource attorney, professional forester for 37 years, the natural resources attorney to 37, or 27. I'm a lecturer, environmental law and policy at Binghamton. And I have an office in Montrose. I'm not here just to counter beer up, but just to speak on my experience of working with the industry down there. I've had fairly extensive experience working with Williams itself. I will admit that it is a big industry and that you make some big holes and that you make some temporary messes. But the clients that I've worked with, and it's been several, more than several, several sets of tenants, I would guess, I've worked with, we've had primarily a majority positive experiences. We've had some negative experiences, but where we've had the negative experiences, Williams always come forth and work it out to my client's approval. And everything's come through in the end that I've had a client who's pleased with the end process. It's basically what I have to say. Okay? Thank you.
And do you live in Susquehanna County? Where do you live? Do you live in Susquehanna County? You're saying you're from union, you live in Susquehanna County. Reveal it.
Mr. Houston.
It's not just an office.
Thank you Judge Epstein for, oh, you're conducting this hearing, ladies speaking here. So I just wanted, it sounds like that the scope of this procedure is to consider environmental effects. Heard several people mention the charter of this procedure has to do with environmental effects and also, I think you're saying, a public need. So I would suggest that environmental, that health impacts are an environmental effect. And, you know, I'm really happy to hear some of the locals speaking out strongly in opposition to this pipeline because what I've observed here is that this town is sharply divided in what this industry does, not just Williams, but the industry in general. What they do is that if they come into a community where they want to wet up, they want to frac, build a pipeline, build a big compressor station, and they start spreading money around, their whole mindset is that they can throw money. So I've been reading the docket, the filings that have already come in on laser pipeline. And what I've found is that a lot of the local people are having health impact, just from reading the docket. I'll tell you some of the things that I've read. Nosebleeds, nausea, headaches, sleep disturbances. These are like health, substantial health and psychological impacts that the community shouldn't have to deal with. And I think there is also seems to be an attitude among these regulatory bodies that the rural community gets less rights than the highly dense community. I've seen this again and again. So I would hope that you listen to these people that are coming and telling you and the commissioners, would listen to the testimony of these people that are having actual impacts because they matter. Maybe only a couple dozen people here that have impacted severely. I mean, like one gentleman said is, you know, there are regional impacts. That's one reason why I'm here, is that these facilities cause regional impacts such as air quality impact because of the, you know, I don't know the stats on this particular one, the Windsor Dunbar compressor station, but I know this Williams Central Station, it's 98,901 tons per year of CO2 equivalent. That's a staggering amount of air emissions. And that's going into, that's from Susquehanna PA, that's coming up to New York. This is going to be going in a different direction, but it still has impacts, regional impacts. So change the name to protect the guilty, that's my note to myself. So one thing that is interesting is that there was a lot of confusion about the name of this facility, the Dunbar compressor Station, because it's not on Dunbar Road. There's sort of one way into it, but I don't think that that right way was ever established, that's the problem. So it's, the entrance is off Patterson Road, but it's still called the Dunbar Compressor Station. And that has caused confusion, from what I understand, among first responders. So they say, I even talked with my friend Mike over here from Williams about this matter and he wasn't sure about whether they're going to actually do that. But they did change the name of the pipeline, formerly called the Laser Northeast Pipeline and a subsidiary, you can think of it as a subsidiary because it's like, they use these subcontractors to make it look like there's indirection, like it's not really Williams that built the pipeline. So anyway, they won't change the name of that, but they did change, the reason why changing the name of the pipeline from the laser pipeline to, what's it called, the main, the main line, the New York main line now, it's also central in Maine, it's all these generic sounding things, is one issue is that, let's say you have a pipeline safety investigator that's like doing research on this and they're looking up main line and they're not finding anything, but if they had looked up laser, they would have found this rap sheet your arm long. So we need to question why the name changed. They have a air of secrecy. So I'll give you an example. We, out of all of these regional problems that we've heard about, there's been five, what is it, four locally, this one twice, Williams Central Station, Lathrow. That's like four major accidents. We've had a public hearing on one of those and that's the Lathrow. We've never had an explanation for Williams about what happened here, like how, or is that somebody mentioned that, you know, is it, was it mechanical failure, was it human error, was it, was it a design bug? What's the reason? Was it a failed part? What's the reason? There's never been a public hearing about two accidents at this station plus one at Williams Central Station. Whatever happened at Williams Central Station, are we ever going to find out? I don't know. They do what they, they do, unless you guys use your enforcement powers, they just do whatever they want to do. They wreak havoc with local communities. You've been hearing that again, over and over tonight. Somebody also mentioned pipelines are destructive. My friend who lives in Susquehanna County, his backyard was, had this gel dumped in his backyard from pipeline construction. In Hancock, New York, there was a house with their septic tank, their water well and their foundation was destroyed by building a Millennium Pipeline. Just building pipelines are horribly destructive to the environment and they, I hear them saying they're going to use the same right away, but I'm pretty sure they're going to be cutting down new trees. I just have a couple more points. Thank you for hearing me. We need to, I believe, I know this, your jurisdiction is New York State, but let me tell you that if they build this pipeline, there is going to be a drilling frenzy just south here in Pennsylvania and where there has been already severe environmental impacts, including Williams Partners and Associates like WPX, a spinoff of Williams, and CAVI, their partner in the Constitution Pipeline. I mean, I was asking my friend Jim Austin, it's like, what, what's the, what's the level? What's, how long does the rap sheet get before you start paying attention to the character of the company, the character of the people you're dealing with? How many accidents does it take for you to say, we're going to deny this permit because of all this? It's a, it's a substantial number of problems that these companies have, that this company has exhibited previously. Somebody already talked about what they say versus what they do. I think that's about it. Please deny this permit until, you know, let's not just say deny for whatever, but let's give, you know, it seems like the local people, the demand was, make this facility come into compliance according to how they originally scoped it and said that they would do before you grant any new construction on either a new pipeline or an expansion of, let me say one more thing, I just thought of one more thing, an expansion of the compressor station. This is my last point. You know, the reason why we need explanations for all of these, these explosions and whatever, these vents and things, the reason why is we need to understand that this company really knows what the hell they're doing. I think they might not, like engineering wise. I'll tell you why. I was listening to the WPX, WPX, the Board of Directors or a couple of the executive board have these investor calls, these weekly, most corporations do this, where they talk to the major investors. And sometimes the transcripts show up online, sometimes the audio shows up online. WPX, which is a spinoff of Williams Company, has been saying for the last year that they are limited in their northeast Pennsylvania production because of problems with the Windsor compressor station. Huh? What's that about? Is it they, they can't crank it up to maximum capacity because of the noise problem or is it some engineering defect to the Windsor Dunbar compressor station? That's why it is absolutely important, before you issue this permit, also, let's hold some public hearings about, get these people in the hot seat and let's ask them questions about all of these accidents before you just grant them willy-nilly another permit. And like other speakers say, I've been at many of these hearings, it seems to be like they knew everything they wanted to and you rubber stamped the permits no matter what. That's what we've seen over and over again. So I'm praying, Judge Epstein, that you can do something in your power to bring this to the attention of the commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. LePold.
How many people are, uh...
How many people are, uh, new to this session that weren't here in the earlier one? Can you raise your hand? Okay, about ten, twelve. All right, I won't touch on a lot of subjects I got touched on before. My name's Mark LaFolles, I live at 330 Dunbar Road, half a mile from the compressor station. Have been fortunate enough to be involved with a working group with the Newtown Supervisor, Carolyn Price, and Lisa Hawk Schuler, and Mike Dickinson, and Mike Gatchey, previously Helen Humphries, for one year to the day. Today was our first, uh, working group meeting we had. Which in it, which in this day and age, I think is pretty good. I'm the type of guy that tells it like it is. I either like it, and I'll tell you that, or I don't like it, and I'll also tell you that. And, you know, that's the way I am, and that's the way you should be. And I've been upfront in all our working group meetings on all the problems we've been having out there. And in the first session, basically, I touched on the noise ordinance, rules and regulations approved by the PSC, hopefully to be upheld by the PSC to have Williams abide by them until any further work is done on anything up there. And I mean, that includes the, the efficiency upgrades that are going on till February here, this month coming up. And, uh, the publication that was in the, advertised in the paper for tonight's, uh, meeting there, dated November thirteenth of thirteen. And I'm glad the previous gentleman touched on the subject of a lot of inadequacies all along the way since the very beginning, from the very beginning on this. This one right here in the paper, along with other publications out there, has the address of the Dunbar Compressor Station. Let me just back up a little bit before I go any farther with that. It's not the correct address, but they still have the address in here as 414 Dunbar Road. There's absolutely no address on that side of the road. Any road frontage access to Williams, previously, uh, Jackson's property, that is on that side of the road, zero. They have purchased the, the Jackson property of forty acres back in, uh, 2010. At that time, they thought they had access to Dunbar Road. It was a right of way, it was only a right of way to the previous, or to the adjacent owner, Jim Lynch. That was his right of way, and he was kind enough to let the previous property owner have access to their property through his property. There is no access on Dunbar Road. If they had to go out and buy out two families, well, one, to get an entrance to Dunbar, that's 106 Patterson Road, that's their main and only entrance. A huge driveway that they've been working on for the past month with constant loads of number three crushed stone from Lockheed. State of the art facility built in 2011, not by Williams, by Laser. They commenced to buy eighty-six Patterson Road because those people were just constantly bitching left and right about all the massive problems that were happening there, and they finally bought them out. That is where their office is located at. Their office is located on a rural residential area, which I, to this day, do not believe is zoned correctly. Should not be there. Anyway, 414 Dunbar Road Facility, Dunbar Compressor Station at 414 Dunbar Road, under official application in the paper. Nine-one-one, you call nine-one-one, where are they going to go? Previous, uh, speakers announced that they went to the wrong location because they didn't have the right nine-one-one address for it, 106 Patterson. So, they've been, you know, we hear the story, well, we know where it's at, so we don't need to have the correct address. We've worked, we've been told in previous working group meetings that if it's something that's substantial, we can change that. Well, any one of you, if you had the wrong address, can they get you changing it? That's a little no question. They may get changing. Basically for nine-one-one. Because you're certainly not going to go to a hospital at 414 Dunbar, and when somebody calls in to nine-one-one on it, and it's not there. So, there's just so many other issues to talk about. Bottom line is, we worked six months, the working group did, on put together that natural awareness night, uh, that we held on, uh, one-twenty-fourth of this year. Had a very good turnout, a hundred fifty people came to it. It's very good. Williams did a heck of a job on it. The town did a heck of a job on it. You know, it took six months. Unfortunately, the timing with the explosion on January sixth, everybody thought it was because of that. No, it wasn't. It's because we worked together. I like to think positive, maybe my wife doesn't think so, but, uh, you know, I like to think positive, our working group meetings, which we have on our twenty coming up this month with Williams, town supervisor, to work these issues out. We've been trying, we've been very patient residents in the hearing. The time has come. We have talked to our county, uh, executive that impressed in three times now. We've talked to Cliff Crouch, twice now, Assemblyman Cliff Crouch. We've sent numerous letters to everybody we could possibly send letters to. Too many people know about what's happening there. So, I have a good feeling that Williams, we can work this noise agreement out if, and only if, the PSC holds on their agreement that nothing will be expanded up there, nothing will be built, any efficiencies, until that noise ordinance issue is coming to compliance with Williams. Unfortunately, there's a whole list of other problems behind that. But basically, you know, the concerned residents of Windsor, you gotta start selling them. And, and our issue is the noise issue. Yes, previous speakers with the air quality. You know, a positive note on that is the DEC is in the process, working with Williams right now as we speak, to come into an agreement with the, uh, air quality that they're going to come up with. You know, they're working together, that's good. New York State has the stringent, the toughest rules and regulations in the entire country, the DEC does, when it comes to air quality emissions, higher than the, the federal government. Gas companies, you know, maybe they don't know it, but not they know it, coming into our area. We need to have these gas companies coming into our area do the right thing. Right from the beginning, they said they wanted to be good news. They came into our neighborhood. We accepted them through Laser at the May nineteenth meeting. Basically, with all hands, arms open for them, because they assured us that you won't hear it, see it, smell it. And I'll tell you, they pulled the wool over everybody's eyes. The town board, the residents, the county executive, the county people, everybody. They pulled the wool completely over all of our eyes. But, there's still a good, positive side to it. It can be corrected. It can be made right. And the PEC, uh, the PSC, I'm sorry. The PSC is the key factor, okay? To help, as a public service commissioner, to do the right thing. And that's, you know, I, I certainly know I work for the state. You know, and, uh, I just, I just hope they do, because if they don't, all is lost. And all will be lost, and we will be moving.
Thank you. Brad Schmidt.
My name is Brad Schmidt, I live on Kent Street, uh, just up the road from where the pipeline currently crosses under Trim Street. And, uh, so I live there, so I see the construction, uh, on Blackchamp Road as well. Uh, my experience has been that the pipeline's been put in very well. There's, uh, no problems using the road, I use it every day. And, uh, from the aesthetics of where the pipeline has gone through, of course, trees are gone, but, uh, I think it was done very well. Uh, I speak in favor generally of, uh, the use of natural gas and the pipeline that we facilitated. I personally would like to be a beneficiary of it, hope to be, and it's, uh, the school, hope to be, and the school district, and the town hall. As a user of modern energy, as we all are, here with lights, driving cars, gasoline, I think it is only natural that we have to accept, a responsibility in using that, a responsibility in seeing where it comes from. And, uh, yeah, as I listen to you very carefully to every speaker, I would just reiterate that I think the PSC, uh, has an obligation to hold Williams and, uh, anyone that works for them in compliance with the noise ordinances, the, uh, air quality emissions. Previous speaker was very intelligent and, uh, and I, I was very impressed with the presentation. I know personally, folks that worked in a compressor station, uh, folks, actually folks, I know too, very personally. These men, uh, are total, very, it, it is driven into this, this, uh, he's my nephew. Driven into that, that everything is to be done safely. I mean, it is the first, foremost, primary overriding concern of the construction in that, uh, facility is to be done safely. I know too, as an industry, they want safety, they don't want a bad name. Yeah, at the same time, uh, regulations are needed, and, uh, so, uh, thank you.
Victor Ferment.
My name is Victor Ferment, as you said, uh, I'm a representative of the Joint Landowners Coalition Field Row. I'm on the Board of Directors. I'm no friend of Mike Gatchey's. Despite what people think, I've never received a dime from the oil and gas companies for my activism. And that being said, I'd like to talk just a little bit about what I know over the last fifteen years that I've been involved in activism against fossil fuels and against all fuels, again, not against them all, but you can't be against everything. You have to be for something. If you look at what's happened, and I think it was nineteen ninety-one when I first started getting involved in, in the issue of coal. I lived between Annapolis Power Plant and the, uh, mother, or not the organization, uh, Westover Power Plant in Johnson City. You can go to my backyard, I'll put glasses of milk down on the table, and to the top of the turnip black, and it happened hard, and particles were falling from two plants, little black particles. Uh, I started to talk a lot about chemicals coming from natural gas. The chemicals come out of coal plant a day, or, uh, from one coal plant is over a hundred and fifty million tons of particulates, a hundred and seventy-four pounds of mercury. One tablespoon of mercury in Lakeview makes the fish unedible. That's what they say, not me, I'm not making this up. If you look at the TVA accident in two thousand and five, the Tennessee Valley, where they spilled, I think it was, uh, five hundred million tons of coal ash directly into the Tennessee River, when the thing exploded, or blew up, or fell apart, or whatever you want to say. It wiped out a whole town and killed the Tennessee River. Uh, they're still working on cleaning it today. So, every energy has its own problem with it. And just this February fourth, another coal plant had a concrete barrier that was underneath the ash dump site giveaway, and they dumped five hundred million pounds of ash into the river there, and, uh, I think it was three counties of people can't drink water now because of that still. So, basically, what I'm trying to say here, uh, well, look at just yesterday, geothermal energy. They're drilling up gas all there, uh, at a new school in Amoone, New York. And they had a pocket methane gas, coincidentally, just like they did five years ago, Carter Road, uh, when they had their, had a pocket methane gas, it migrated. And it wouldn't surprise me in a couple of days to see people from Olego carrying a ground jugs saying, "Look, they took my water." Wouldn't surprise me at all, because it's quite possible that gas has migrated to other wells. After all, we do live on the largest shale play in the world, from what I understand. We live on several large shale plays. As far as the pipeline goes, I'm definitely for it, and let me explain why. Just, just this one winter, just this winter here, I wish I had a gas pipeline coming to my farm, my house. It's out of farm that I bought, but it's not a farm anymore. I wish I had a pipeline coming, because I'm paying five dollars and thirty cents a gallon for propane to heat my house. Just three months ago, it was two dollars and forty-five cents. So, the cost of propane has gone from the rough, and I blame that on the, uh, fact that, uh, people are holding up the Seneca Falls storage of, uh, propane facility where they want to enlarge it. They say, I don't know if you know Dr. Chu is, the President's advisor on, on energy. He just said that wind and solar are going to be eighty percent more costly than natural gas. And he gave the reasons why. He said, and everybody's heard this, wind doesn't always blow, the sun doesn't always shine. And everybody says, "Ah, you know, that's nothing to do with it." But the third thing he said was, the, the lack of land to put these plants, to put solar and wind, is, there isn't any where the sun always does shine and the wind always does blow. So, we have to have natural gas no matter what. The other reason I'm for this pipeline is I'm old enough to remember the building of Rudy and the English of Vivint and Dallody. And I have friends, family, I mean, I was only seventeen, eighteen years old, and they came through there, used eminent domain, take people's property and put ivory in, but they did it. And just like here today, there was people against it. Just like today, just like there will be tomorrow, just like there will be a hundred years from now. In nineteen oh-two, when they started building the subways in New York City, people said, "You can't dig holes in the ground, you'll release the dough." They had big protests outside of buildings that were designing these things. You can look it up, it's on the internet. They were afraid they would release the dough, they put it in a subway. And that, we gotta do away with that kind of thing. We have to move forward, what's best for the environment, what's best for the community. And like the President just said in his speech, just, uh, State of the Union address. Thanks to natural gas, the United States is leading the world in the reduction of CO2s into the atmosphere. So, all this stuff you hear, all this bad stuff you're hearing here tonight, and frankly, if, if what I'm hearing is true about these people's concerns with the Williams, uh, not living up to their promises, Mike, I know you, and I, I'm sure that you're going to work with the people, and I hope you do. If you don't, my name's Vic Ferment. If, if you guys have these continuing problems that I'm hearing about, I'd like to know about it because I'm not with the gas companies, I'm with the people. I like to think I'm the people. I like to believe that I represent the people in New York City who are going to get this gas, the people who are switching from oil to natural gas in a city where thirteen thousand kids a day are diagnosed with asthma because of the oil particulates, the diesel particulates that are being burned in New York City. There's a lot we can do, working together, to mitigate the problems. But to come up here in a community in which divides a community, isn't the gas company. It's not the gas company, they're, they're a part of it, but they're not, they're not dividing the community. What divides the community is people spewing misinformation and untruths about the energy that they don't understand. And I just say that I think the PSC definitely needs to keep an eye on Mike Williams and his, his Williams Company here to make sure things get done right, but I think you should move forward because just like when they built the Kennedy Reservoir and kicked little old ladies and little women off their property and made them relocate to family, very obvious. This is for the good of everybody, not the state. This is for the good of everybody, not the city. Thank you.
Okay, nobody else has signed up, and we are going to adjourn unless there's somebody who would like to speak. We have one customer, anybody else? Okay. You'll have to each refresh me as to whether you did sign up.
I did sign up before, and mine's a question.
Yeah, I probably don't have an answer for you, but let's hear it anyway.
Well, my question is, I think we've had a nice exchange, in effect, with that gentleman, I think I would like to speak to you. My question is, what happens now with this? What is the process that's going to occur? Are you involved, or, you know, you transcribed what we said?
Right.
And then what happens? What are the steps of what happens now?
As far as I know, it hasn't been determined yet. In some, some cases before the PSC become litigated cases, and what that usually means is that the staff of the Department of Public Service, for a given case, they'll take the role of an independent advocate for the consumer interest or the public interest or whatever may be called in a particular case, and they go into a courtroom-type hearing where they, where the staff will put on witnesses who are, have technical expertise in various areas, engineering, environment, accounting, all these things. And the, and applicant will also put in opposing witnesses, and testimony will be taken in their reprocess interview. It's just like a trial, but that doesn't always happen. And I think that gets decided on a case-by-case basis, that the staff will look at a controversy and either say, yes, we want to take sides in this and litigate it out, or they might not, they might look for some kind of negotiated outcome. So in this case, I have no knowledge that that kind of decision has been made yet. If there were a decision to...
I hope so. That's why we're here.
Right. If there were a decision to have a fully contested case with trial staff going up against Williams, then I or somebody like me would be presiding over it, but I have the control that that's in my future. So I, again, as far as I know, I can't answer your question at this time.
Well, again, I'm just going to respond to the gentleman who just spoke, and again, I would like to be with you and talk with you, and I think we're on different sides of this issue, which is okay, as I say to Carolyn, I'm not sure if Carolyn's still here, but, you know, we agree to disagree.
Coming together, it's all about. Come together, simple.
Absolutely. And you mentioned, somebody mentioned letter stacking here, and I was at the town board meeting with a proof letter stacking, they're going to do it, and that was, I think it's two years ago, and...
Town 206 and up there.
I asked the gentleman, I said, you know, "How much are we going to save when, you know, when this comes in?" And he said, "Your bill will be two-thirds less of what it is now with natural gas." They came back not too long ago, and I asked the same question, and he said, "Your bill's going to be, you're going to save a third." And I said, "Wait, I'm paying attention, I'm listening. One year you said it was two-thirds you're saving, and now you're saying it's a third? What will it be next year? Let me just finish." And again, we'll have a discussion, I think. And looking at propane, because I have a friend that has propane, you just mentioned propane was, you know, 250, whatever the price is on it, it shot up through the roof. That's what can happen with this industry, because what they do is they come in, they kind of get their foot in the door, and then prices can go up. You have no choice, just like propane, that's my fear.
Let me say this out loud, because you just said, just so everybody can hear it.
Please.
That's why you have competition between fuel companies. These companies are going to come in, and if you didn't have natural gas, propane would be higher. If you didn't have hydroelectricity, propane would be higher. Prices fluctuate because of competition. The reason you were told two years ago it's going to be two-thirds less because of natural gas was at $1.98.
Right.
Today, it's at $4.50 more.
Right, and they calculated out $4.50, is what the gentleman said. But again, my point here is, that discussion, which is really not a part of this proceeding, but I feel it's important to say this, that we have to pay attention, we have to listen to each other, and things are complicated, and it's very important we pay attention to each other, and we agree to disagree. Scott Farz is my name. And then, keep going.
Just give you your name again.
Egeri, 181 Guyer Road, Windsor. Just want to respond to a few comments that have been made that natural gas will benefit everybody, so that is why we should be doing it. But I still have concerns about Williams' ability to safely construct the facility and operate it. In January, when there was a safety awareness meeting in Windsor, Mike Dickinson, the Regional Manager of Operations, got up and did a PowerPoint presentation, which if my memory serves me correctly, was titled "How We Keep the Public Safe." And he spent a lot of time talking about what he called his "System Integrity Plan." And under this System Integrity Plan, he talked about, "We continuously improve our operations." How do we do that? Well, we measure the results, and we continuously enhance the environment, the health, the safety of operations." He was a nut I took down as he was saying this. After that, I asked him a very specific question. I said, "Well, if you've got this continuous improvement underway, and you measure your results, and you make changes as you find they're needed, can you give me some specific illustrations, some examples of how you have changed your procedures or protocols of operation based on the results of your system analysis? Because you have had five, or six, or seven, or eight major events in the past two years. What have you learned from them?" And he could not give me an answer. That does not give me faith that this company is, in fact, clearly focused on safety, has safety as their number-one priority, which is their claim. So I have a lot of skepticism about hearing about safety when there are continuous events that prove the opposite. Thank you.
I was about to speak tonight. My name's Steve Goss, G-O-S-S. I actually work by a compressor station. I'm one of the people that have to put up with the daily traffic, the noise. I don't want to live there at all. I'm one of those people that want to move. Having a second pipeline, the noise, I don't want to do it. Laser came in, promised us a whole bunch of stuff. They went behind our backs, and they did a lot of stuff with the town, could have had a different supervisor in place. Between that and Williams buying our laser, and the last couple of years, putting up with the upgrades, constant upgrades, when it will ever stop, I don't, you know, we just don't know, you know? There's no end date to this compressor station, you know? It's going to have to be upkeep and fixed, and different maintenance things that go on there that is unbearable as for being a resident's house. I don't get no compensation out of the compressor station, I don't get the gas, I don't get anything. I'm for, you know, natural gas, and I think the residents around, when initially this pipeline was supposed to come through, I think we were told something, it never happened. I think it's up to the state in New York to make sure that things can somehow put in some kind of safety factor for the residents, between the noise, and the sound, and the traffic, and the other stuff that goes along with that, the wildlife. I don't even see a rabbit in there, you know? Lucky to have a deer, you know, the birds are gone, you know? I actually gave up feeding the birds, so. But the whole wildlife thing, and the trees, the creeps, the erosion, I see it. I feel so bad for that gentleman with the creek, because I understand that they took down hundreds of trees, and they did no kind of research to find out what the impact is going to be. So this is how, you know, these companies do it, they wait for the problems to secede. We got problems. We need some kind of leverage to get the problems fixed. If holding off this pipeline will do it to get at least one or two trains done, I'm all for it, you know? Hopefully, when I moved up there over 20-some years ago, that was the place I want to retire. I'm rethinking that I do not want to live next to this compressor station, I do wake up with headaches, I actually have to have an air cleaner in the house now, and the air cleaner does go off constantly, and it's picking up some kind of air pollution in the house. Besides the traffic, probably don't mind, if something's going to help, it's going on, the air blowing, it works. I never in my life, when I moved out there, would ever have to be concerned about. So, thank you for hearing, I hope this gentleman here will take our thoughts and put them to good use.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Carolyn Price, and I'm supervisor for the town of Windsor. And I want to thank the Public Service Commission for coming here and giving all of these people an opportunity to speak. I believe that when you have a discussion like this, you have different ideas, we can work with good ones, and we are trying to work together. One of the things that I did want to address was, I'd like the Public Service Commission to consider posting their investigative reports online. Information is really powerful. And we have the report from the July 23rd, 2012 lightning strike, because we foiled it. And I would like to read for the public what Williams did as a result of this, because I really believe it emphasizes that they are concerned about safety. The operator's safety officer, Kate Camp, did an internal post-event debriefing of involved individuals, and later, a review of safety policy with his local personnel regarding purging procedures at the compressor station. If lighting appears to be possible in the visual inspection of weather at the time of planned purging, purging will be postponed. An example of this stand-down policy being implemented occurred since the original event and was exercised on the night of August 14th, 2012, during other type of routine maintenance.
Let me just ask you a question about what you're reading from, what you foiled?
This is the report from the Public Service Commission investigation of the event.
And that's what you foiled successfully?
Yes.
And I thought I heard here that you obtained the report subject to some kind of provision that it wasn't to be shared with anybody else who wanted, that had to foil it themselves, was that what you understood?
We were told, we asked our attorney, and we were advised that if a citizen wanted to foil it, they have to foil it from us, or foil it from the Public Service Commission. But what I'm saying to you, and I do want to read the rest of it, it's not very long, is one section.
That's what I...
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say is that I think if the Public Service Commission was more open with these documents, there would be a better understanding, and an understanding of the safety procedures and things that are approved as a result of this, because I'm sitting here tonight, listening to people, like, they believe that there's no follow-up, there's no changes because of it, and if they could read this document, they could see for themselves, yes, there were positive things that came from it. So that's the point I'm trying to make with the Public Service Commission, why don't you make these documents public?
I understand the principle of it, I just don't want to be partying to some, to violating some understanding that I'm not, violating some provision that I'm not understanding.
Okay, so you are concerned about my reading from this report?
I, I mean, on the face of it, it doesn't strike me as something you shouldn't do, because I would think, well, it's been made public, but I'm not, I'm not quite sure.
If it's foillable, it's public, it's public interest, it's public.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm, I'm hearing through separate theories. One is that it's public, and the other is that it's not, and I guess I just don't want to...
We want to hear the party to violate.
I mean, it's, I'm sorry, what were you just...
Well, I think just basically, I can sum it up that, you know, from what I've read, that they postponed some purging as a result of this, because when there was a weather issue, and then they went on to train first responders and did upgrade deals. As residents of the town, need to have this information and believe that there is safety training going on. So, again, I won't belabor it, I have another, you know, report that I want to read, but I do think the Public Service Commission should strongly consider making these investigative reports public.
Okay, well, I have that point, as far as putting the actual document into the record by reading it here, if you want to do that unilaterally by, you know, publishing it in some other form, or issuing it somehow, that's different, but if you were asking me to provide this forum for that purpose, I'm not sure I'm, that's within my authority.
Why should there be secrecy?
All right, okay. Well...
I'm sorry.
Why should there be secrecy? This is really of public interest. What went on is of public...
Well, I don't think it's about secrecy, I think it's about the law, as you heard.
There's a freedom of information law that says that some things should be secret, and some things should, I don't know.
Safety information, I suggest, should be public.
Yeah, I just don't know, you know, under what conditions, if any, this document is...
Like Carolyn said, you can foil it from her, I'm sure she has it.
Yes. It can be foiled from the town of Windsor.
Can we, can we ask why, can we ask why that a municipality has to foil?
That's ridiculous.
A government, this is a municipality now, it's a government operation here. Why do they have to foil a government document that, in your own town, it happened? The town board wants to know what it is. The town board wants to know what it is. They shouldn't even have to foil it, absolutely not. Yes, I can see maybe us as citizens foiling it from the town. But that is absolutely horrendous, that the town of Windsor, now we have to foil the, we, God only knows when, the January 6th explosion finalized, so the town's going to have to foil that.
Yeah. See, I don't, I don't really know whether that's the case. I just don't know enough about this situation to, to understand why...
A, a lot of people, they, they want to know that.
I, I, I don't know. It's new to me tonight.
All right.
I, I don't understand why...
No, that's, that's fine. Maybe if we can get an answer on the website or something.
Yeah. I, I don't understand why a, um...
Yeah, it's amazing.
We don't either.
Why a document was released under foil, but only conditionally.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not sure...
It's not your fault.
Even what the conditions were, because I, I'm only, I'm only getting hearsay tonight. I'm, I'm sorry. I just, I just can't give you a legal opinion. But it seems to me that, um, I might very well be doing something beyond the scope of my authority if I, if I invited you to continue reading.
Thank you. What I'd like to address are two of the items that the Public Service Commission requested comments on. And one of those is land use, and the other is noise. And first that I will address is land use. The proposed pipeline goes through rural area, sparsely populated. The general character of the area is abandoned farmland with a mixture of overgrown fields, forested areas, and a small amount of active agricultural land. There are rolling hills, side slopes, and a few steep hills. The proposed pipeline will cross a variety of land uses. On Exhibit D, field summary, you can see that nearly two-thirds of the land to be used is the existing pipeline right way. The other one-third of the land is made up of active agricultural land, woodland, hay, abandoned agricultural land, pasture land, open land, unimproved pasture, scrub shrub, public road right-of-way, industrial and active agriculture and pasture land. The active agricultural land and active agriculture and pasture land is 4,882 feet, just under 1% of the total land in the proposed pipeline project. If any of this land is used for temporary workspace, regulations from the PSC and DEC need to be followed and extra precautions taken. An important part of the project that must be addressed is post-installation assessment to make sure the post-installation restoration is done per the agreements with the manors. The second item I would like to address is noise. The town of Windsor has a noise local law. It is Chapter 68 of the Town of Windsor Code and is entitled "Noise Control." As part of the original Article 7 review, Laser, Williams' precursor, admitted that this law was reasonable and that it could be complied with. As such, the PSC required compliance with it. The law is reasonable as it sets a reasonable standard, but it also allows for due process and reasonable deviation in several ways. With specific showings, the law allows for deviation from the ambient default noise levels, and it allows for a temporary license and a longer-term special permit for deviation above the levels. Williams has requested that the Public Service Commission grant a special permit for elevated noise levels during construction of the second pipeline. I believe that it is proper for Williams to make this request and is a correct request under the law. Additionally, because of the PSC's preemption power, I believe that the PSC is the correct agency to review the matter. I would ask the PSC to make such a review using all the requirements of the law. Specifically, Section 6812 requires a balancing test to review the application. Again, this is a reasonable provision requiring after the standards are met, that if only the minimum relief necessary to achieve the goal be granted, but while requiring best noise management practices. Additionally, there is precedent for this application, as Laser previously made a request for the special permit, which after complying with the law, was granted by the town board. The ambient noise levels, and therefore Williams' compliance with the PSC order, still remains unresolved. As part of the review for the special permit, the PSC should address this large, unresolved factor issue, ambient noise. The sound level and frequency of the ambient noise is actually a suggestive factor of the special permit review. I direct your attention to Section 6812 E2D. In my letter to the PSC dated April 16th, 2013, I wrote that the PSC will be the authority that decides if this applicant demonstrates and provides truth that the ambient noise level should be different than the default. Previously, I recommended that the PSC resolve these questions before acting on this application for the second pipeline. Resolving these questions is necessary as part of the special permit process and the second pipeline application and review. The town asks that the PSC use all of its available resources and review the application for the second pipeline and the application for the special permit. Throughout this review, the town asks the PSC to keep in mind not only the noise control local law requirements and standards, but also what is in the best interest of the town of Windsor and its residents. Thank you.
Ms. Price, what was the, uh, the letter, the 16th of what, you, 2013?
It was April 16th, 2013.
Did I see the word submitting a copy of your statement just now?
Um, yes, I sent it to you, it's in the copy.
Oh, if, if you like, I, I just, I was, I was wondering whether you just, if, if you want to...
Yes, and do I give it to you, or...
Um, is there anybody else that has something to say, or saying people have something else to say? Yes, sir.
We'll keep it short. Martin Polk, 330 Dunbar Road. Just want to reiterate with the, uh, the PSC's commitment to the residents around the compressor station. Many conversations with Jim Austin, Corey Strube, some emails going back and forth, giving us the assurance that no further work would be done up there until the compressor station came into compliance with the noise ordinance that Laser agreed with and Williams fought. At the safety awareness night on January 24th, it was very good. Once again, we had a great turnout. Mike Dickinson was up there giving the presentation, did a good job, answered the questions real well. But, there was one point up there, Mike, on your slideshow, that is basically a quote-unquote. It's a, Williams is a company of 4,700 people they employ. It's a hundred years old of integrity, and right below that, it says, you had on the slide there that, uh, Williams' definition of integrity. "We always do the right thing when no one is looking." And I had a saying on my refrigerator that it preached to my boys. "Always do the right thing at the right time, for the right reason, and you can't go wrong." Thank you.
And I'm going to submit, stop here too. Okay. Uh, thank, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking the interest and, and, uh, taking the interest with a very, thank you.[1764.12]